Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Chandra, can you read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions of this virtual meeting were posted on our website and all social media on Friday, August 14th.
Thank you, may we have roll call.
Mr. Ellis, excuse me, Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Seen her check in yet? Uh, Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here. Okay, may I have a motion to go into executive, please?
This is Mr. Price. I make that motion.
I second Mrs. Sullivan.
Okay, Mr. Price, Mrs. Sullivan, uh, all in favor? And, uh, we'll see on the other side in the other call. Okay, it is 7:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And I'm gonna ask Ms. Anaya if you would please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and social media on Friday, August 14th.
Thank you. Uh, may we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here. Okay, at this point, uh, when you see the flag on your screen, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Uh, welcome everyone to our August regular business meeting. But this is by no means a regular meeting. Uh, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. You will notice, uh, that the meeting appears different. We're in tile view, or as I like to call it, the Brady Bunch view. So hopefully, members, uh, at home, uh, watching, uh, live or recording will be able to see us all a little bit better. We have some very important business to discuss and take care of this evening that, um, relates to the times that we're in. And I just have a couple of quick remarks before I introduce, uh, Dr. Gruccio for, uh, for her report. The, the pandemic we have seen in 2020 is, uh, like nothing we've ever seen. And the circumstances have been nothing short of devastating for school districts across the country. Um, and for nations around the world. Uh, I wanna just briefly lay out where we are in our return to school effort. You'll all remember in June, the state issued, uh, a road back plan. Road back to school plan. And we followed that plan. We followed it to a T. In that plan, we were required to submit a plan to the state that included in-person instruction to some extent. We had no choice in the matter. And we did that. We put a road back to school committee together. And I want to take a moment to again thank everyone who participated on that committee. The outstanding staff effort that went into it. Um, it was absolutely outstanding. And I believe we put together the absolute best plan this district could have put together. And so I thank you all for it. The plan will remain a vital guide po- guidepost, a vital part of our, um, planning moving forward. Now, last Wednesday, the governor threw a curveball to every school district in the state of New Jersey. Because what he did was turn that road back guidance that was initially issued upside down. Now, according to Executive Order 175, we can only begin in-person instruction if we can certify that we have met certain specified health and safety requirements that are related to COVID-19. That was a major change. And that came at us very, very late. Very, very late in August. And gives us very, very little time to work with. So now we must reevaluate. And that's what Dr. Gruccio, uh, will be presenting about in her superintendent's report. Uh, I know that, uh, our administration has been working even more feverishly since last Wednesday and the updated, uh, guidance came out. Even though they had already, uh, just as all of us had, ha- have been working, uh, pretty much since this pandemic began. But last Wednesday took it to a new notch of the complexity and the level of work required of everyone, and I want to thank them for it. So, before I turn this over to Dr. Grucci, I just want to remind, uh, everyone of, uh, I think the core beliefs that I have, and I think we all share, that the health, the safety, and the welfare of our students, our teachers, our staff, their families and loved ones remains a top priority among top priorities. And with that, I'll ask Dr. Gruccio to, uh, begin her presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. Uh, thank you for laying out the groundwork and, uh, helping prepare for the presentation that I am about to, uh, share with the Board of Education and, and the public. I will let you know that, um, there's gonna be a lot of me talking over the next few minutes. Um, I spent many, many hours researching, conversing, and contemplating. But, um, I'm finally at peace with myself. And, um, I am going to, right now, attempt to present a window that I have here, as long as my computer cooperates. Can you all see this? Please say yes. Can we see this? No.
Not yet, Doc.
I think it's right in the middle? No?
No, not right in the middle, huh? Okay, share. How about this? So... Why do I have this trouble in front of the board? I am going to present a tab. Here we go.
And you picked the tab.
And I picked the tab, and I got it.
And you hit okay.
There we go. How about now?
Yeah, it's kicking.
Good job. There it is. Yep.
I have to go to present mode. And we'll get right there. When I go up to slide one. And here we go. Okay, so here we go. As I said, I apologize, there'll be some, a lot of talking here, but again, I put a lot of time into this presentation, and, uh, I ask you to just be patient and to listen, uh, carefully. So, as you are aware, we have worked very hard to follow the orders from Governor Murphy and the New Jersey Department of Education. This began with the Road Back to School document that was released seven weeks ago. In that time, we have researched this 104-page document and the four categories that demanded we create a plan for in-person instruction and be ready with a plan for remote instruction and remote learning in case we need to subtly pivot to all virtual instruction. That was the guidance then. So we did just that, because, uh, we are always, uh, we always give 125%. We had input of 800 stakeholders, 11 committees, and the district roadback committee. Allow me to pause here to thank each and every one of the stakeholders who participated, who gave their time, gave their feedback, and shared their passion and knowledge to help us with this project. You helped us create a relevant plan for the return to school. But also remember, you gave us guidance on the virtual learning model. Your feedback from our experience in the spring was vital. You gave us feedback for improvement. In a five-hour meeting, we reviewed every section of the Road Back to School Plan. And we built our plan upon the minimum standards outlined at the time by the Department of Education, including an all-virtual option. This plan was sent to the New Jersey Department of Education, we- for review. I sit here still waiting for feedback. It's August 17th. Another noted fact is that there were a few questions submitted to the Department of Education that have yet to be answered. September is 14 days away, nine of which are workdays for us. Since then, we have continued our preparations to open our schools in the safest and healthiest way possible. Following the rules as we always do, we released a survey asking our parents to commit to in-person instruction or virtual instruction, as well as transportation or no transportation. Much time was spent disaggregating this survey data so that we can then take the in-person commitments and schedule students into cohorts of AABB. This created the need for development of abbreviated school schedules and teaching schedules that had to be balanced and aligned so that if we all had to pivot at any time to all remote learning, it would be an easy transition for all students and staff to move from in-person schedule to a remote, remote learning schedule. And I pause again to thank the administration and administrators who spent endless hours in creating these schedules. Um, the thought process was amazing, and I thank you because I'd have done it without you. As Mr. Castellano said, there has been changes since the Road Back to School guidance. On August 3rd, the Department of Education released a checklist for the reopening of schools that outlined 12 areas that had to be reviewed and implemented by school districts. I want to stress that this checklist comes with no trainings or explanations for school districts. Usually, the Department of Education holds training meetings. An example is when we go through New Jersey Q-SAC evaluation. The Executive County Superintendent and DOE that he represents holds department meetings to trained administration in the process and the expectations and how they need to be met. But being the team players that we are, we began to try, tried to navigate with blindfolds on to adhere to the checklist items. On August 13th, more change came when the governor released the Executive Order 175. And the Department of Health released guidelines for local health departments. Let me take this time to share that Executive Order 175 says, "All school districts that reopen for full or part-time in-person instruction must meet the following health and safety standards." Delinated in this Department of Health checklist for reopening of school 2020-21. And detailed in the Road Back Restart Recovery Plan for Education, which includes, but are not limited to, the following: social distancing, PPEs, face masks, cleaning and sanitation, facility facilitation of handwashing stations or alcohol-based hand sanitizer, bus procedures, staff and student screening, protocols if someone becomes sick, a plan to ensure facilities have adequate ventilation, plans for athletics, physical education, choir and music classes, and contact tracing. It also says, "If a school district is unable to satisfy all the requirements above, a district may provide full-time remote instruction for all students." The district must provide a plan to the Department of Ed as what still needs to be completed when the anticipated completion date is and when the expected return to school date is. The most recent documents, specifically the Executive Order 175 and the New Jersey Department of Health guidance, provide instances of conflicting information. And also provide information that is in conflict with what the Atlantic County Health, Department of Health has previously provided to us, as well as providing information for the first time. Here's an example. Executive Order 175, page 7, number 2A states, "At least six feet distance between individuals in all settings to the greatest extent practical or social distancing modifications." The New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 Public Health Recommendations for Local Health Departments for K-12 Schools dated August 13th, page 6 states, "Face coverings are not a substitute for social distancing." As a result of the conflicting information from both of these documents, our question is which one takes precedence? I'm still waiting the answer. The, the New Jersey Department of Health, the m- states, "The more people a student or staff member interacts with, and the longer that interaction, the higher the risk of COVID-19." And then in the next section states that groups of students should stay together and are, and should be with the same teacher throughout the school day, and groups should not intermingle. The Atlantic County Department of Health says that they will notify us if students are positive. The New Jersey Department of Health says, "Parents and staff are to notify school districts directly, and then we notify their contacts and report to the local Department of Health." The Executive Order speaks to cloth face, face coverings. This is new information. On top of all the confusion, the Department of Education just recently released an attestation form to be signed by superintendents to attest with certainty that our plan will meet what I see as all of this conflicting guidance. This attestation form is a checklist of yes and no responses where this limited response could place school districts in a position of assuming unreasonable liability for students, staff, and community because of now the multiple state and federal directives have changed. I will not put myself or my Board of Education or school district in this position. Let me speak about our educational advocates. And we'll add this to the convoluted information. Educati- educational advocates, the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, the New Jer- New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association, and NJEAG released a joint statement that simply states that schools are not ready to open because the guidelines are not achievable under the current conditions. And this includes inadequate funding, PPEs, contact tracing, unknown and unanswered questions. These associations are recommending all remote learning for school districts to safeguard students and staff from this highly contagious and lethal virus without the needed tools and trainings. The lack of clear guidelines and detailed protocols for monitoring, contact tracing, and notification is a sincere concern. The New Jersey State Association of School Nurses endorse all remote start for the school year to give schools the extra time that they need to ensure that health and safety protocols are met before students and staff return to in-person learning and to help manage the spread of COVID-19. Our Atlantic County School Nurses still do not have direct and set guidelines and have called for a meeting with the Atlantic County Department of Health, which I believe is occurring to tomorrow, uh, tomorrow. In addition, we just received a letter from the president of the Egg Harbor Township Education Association, also seeking a remote start for the school year. Other feedback that I have gleaned in my research. I've been in tune with the news, governor's press conferences, and feedback from concerned citizens. The governor has stated that the virus is rampant inside buildings, hence, no indoor dining is allowed. Schools could shut down if they have two or more COVID cases in different classes. The State Commissioner of Health stated, "Everyone is confused because this virus is confusing." "We are looking into how this virus affects children and adults." "It changes, it changes because this is a very efficient virus and knows how to move and transmit significantly." She enforced social distancing, masking, and good hygiene for schools. But when asked about indoor dining, said, "This is a droplet virus and can easily be transmitted quickly in a dining room." Dr. Fauci said, "Schools could have classes outside as much as possible." Now we know that cannot happen in New Jersey on a consistent basis. He also said, "If you want to open, do what you need to do." The CDC says that school officials should make decisions about school reopening based on the available data, including levels of community transmission and their capacity to implement appropriate mitigation measures in schools. Most recent COVID-19 report, um, that was shared with me from, um, NJDOH, where they've created six regions in the state of New Jersey. We are in region southeast. And today, the southeast is second.
Dr. Grucci, if you wanted to share that screen, I think you have to hit that tab. We still just see the blue screen. I wasn't sure if you were gonna present.
Um, I am.
Sound like you were referencing the document, that's all.
There you go. How's that? Does that work?
There you go.
There we go. So this is a document that was shared with me, um, by the Department of Health, New Jersey Department of Health, who's created six regions in the state of New Jersey. We are the southeast region. We are considered moderate at this time. Um, but I will tell you that we are second to the southwest region, um, in the, in the highest cases of New Jersey COVID cases. Right, how do I get out of here? And go back? Are we, are we back to my, uh, slide?
You have to share your screen again. Present now.
Hang on a second. That's what I get for trying to be fancy, right? Chrome tab. There we go. Here we go. How about that? Are we here? Everybody see that?
Not yet, Dr. Grucci.
Oh, Chandra. Hold on. There you go. Here we go. Now here's my selection. There we go. There we go now?
There we go.
Yeah, but you're, it's dark as mine is, right? Stop. Let me try this again. Hmm, bear with me. I don't know why it is dark. Anybody know why? Hang on. How we doing? What do you see?
Wanna start from the top? We just see the, um, gallery view again, so. Present now. Just start from the top.
I'm trying, but my Chrome tab is spinning. How about now? Better?
No.
I don't know what to tell you.
Dr. Grucci, if you're able to share that presentation with me, I can see if I have luck pulling it up, um, on one of my tabs.
There you go, Steve. It's coming your way.
Good answer, Steve.
Ha, ha. He always saves the day. Mr. St. Edward. Always saves the day. Here you go. Sharing. I'm still gonna try it one more time. No?
We got it. Somebody put it up there.
Yeah, you're sharing, Dr. Grucci. Now just do hit present on the, uh, slide itself.
Hey, I did it. All right, almost done. Okay, so we bring this to this slide. Um, we talked about the COVID cases. Um... Just want to finish the COVID cases with the CDC also state that there's mixed evidence about whether returning to school results in increased transmission or outbreaks. That is in their CDC document. And they stated that more research and evaluation is needed on the implementation of the mitigation strategies used in school to determine which strategies are most effective. My feeling, skid, kids should not be the test group. Moving on to leadership section. Um, I, I share this slide and this presentation with my administrative staff, as I believe transformational leadership um, is, is the way to go. And as a transformational leader, I take pride in leading change. I take pride in empowering my staff, and I take pride in 100% believing in what my gut tells me. I take pride in believing the capacity, um, for change. And, uh, transformational leaders have a vision for meeting current and future needs. A transformational leader has the ability to ignite change by confronting the brutal fact. In my profession, I find that we have to decide to be leaders or followers. And tonight, I, I, I stress the fact that I will be a leader. I am a leader. After many sleepless nights, um, a current state of nausea, and weighing all that we have done and what we need to do, I cannot follow and lead with unclear guidance. A good leader listens and learns and realizes it's time to take this school district off this bumpy road back to school and, and do what's right to ensure the health and safety of the students and teachers and staff. We have eight days left this summer. I can't wait any longer for guidance. We are too big of a school district. My mantra is, and we stress, there's a need for one voice and one message. And that's how I try to lead my school district, and it's important to my staff that they receive one voice, one message, and this should be just as important to the Department of Education and the Governor of New Jersey. Change takes time, and it involves training. We need time to prepare our schools, teachers, staff, students, and parents in the use of PPE, social distancing, and virtual learning. It's time to take control of what I can control, and that is remote learning for all. Let us take this time to focus on an effective and efficient all-virtual learning experience for our teachers and students. Let me be clear, I am not saying our schools are unsafe. I am saying that due to the changing and unclear guidance, lack of training, and lack of time. And in order to ensure that we meet or exceed the New Jersey Department of Education, the governor, the New Jer- New Jersey Department of Health's expectations, Egg Harbor Township Schools open as all-virtual on September 8th and continue until October 23rd. We anticipate, based on the information we have now, that October 26th will be the start date for the Egg Harbor Township Road Back to Plan, Road Back to School Plan of hybrid and virtual learning options for students go and take, go and click. Along the way, we will hold meetings to assess our current reality, as well as our county's current reality. And we will provide updates for the Board of Education and community at our monthly meetings. Our administrative recommendations. As an educator, I know the importance of schools and the critical role that, that they play in the well-being of children and communities. Schools provide critical instruction and academic support, social, emotional, mental health support, athletics, fine and performing arts, activities, special services for children, so all can be successful. And this is just to name a few. We are well aware that some of our students require specialized programming and services. We know that this is not ideal, and while we will remain virtual for the start of the school year, we are going to be providing information on utilizing in, our in-person's talents program and our virtual aspire program for our families to serve as childcare during this time. and our virtual aspire program for our families to service childcare during this time. And we will be working and providing in-person related services for our students of need. At this time, I know that we can assure that um spaces for these programs will have PPE and training in place for those who monitor them because they are of, in smaller settings. I want to assure everyone that this virtual learning plan will be different than what we had in the spring. The plan will be more structured. A student, a teacher will have schedules to follow over an abbreviated day with time in the afternoon for small group instructions and meetings with teachers and students. Teachers will have time built in to be trained on building lessons. Students will have to attend four hours of instruction and attendance will be taken. Athletics and band will be allowed to continue while we are closed. However, we have heard from the NJSIA in sharing some new news, that they will be sharing some new news this week about the fall season. So change will continue to happen and we need to be flexible to adjust. I will conclude with the need to remind you that we are the largest school district in Atlantic County with 10 school buildings, 7,300 students, over 1,300 employees. Even with reduced numbers, we are talking about a thousand people, thousands of people in our buildings. We need to be 100% prepared and confident. And with, and I have, I also have concerns uh with possible staffing uh due to illness. Um, you know, where are folks going to get, get substitutes? So um that, that is a concern I want to throw out there because while you may hear that neighboring school district in Atlantic County are ready to open in person, please think about their size. I direct you to school districts that are already committed to remote learning. Atlantic City, Vineland, Millville, Camden, they are large school districts. They need more time. So I sit here and I hereby propose that one, we engage in full virtual learning from September 8th to the 23rd of October. We will review at the September 22nd and our October board meetings to see about our progress and if we are set to come in on October 20, 26. We will allow our time staff to focus on training, required requirements and, and, and to learn how to teach in a hybrid school schedule. We also need to focus on professional development for intense virtual instruction required by the Department of Ed. Please allow us to have time to have our PPE completely in stock and train our parents, students and teachers to feel comfortable with its use and its non-use. Allow us time to better schedule students for in-person class rotations, work on our traffic flow issues within our schools as we await informational and directional signage, and we need to educate on all of these logistics. Allow us time for our government-sponsored technology to arrive. Also allow us to put our virtual learning plan in place with support for students and, and our staff and, and allow for childcare program to be in place. I stand behind my decision as a health, safety and welfare of the students, staff and parents or paramount. It is time that we embrace this current reality, embrace the construct of Egg Harbor Township, engage in working together, working together on our road, with our Road Back to School Committee, our administration, our Board of Education, our Egg Harbor Township Education Association. And, and, and finally, to educate all about our plan about the safety protocols, the use of PPE and how to function in virtual learning environment. And finally, let us all be hashtag ready to serve our students and our staff. Mr. Castellano, that concludes my presentation. Um, I know it was lengthy, um but like I said, I put a lot of research into it and um that's my proposal.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Grugio. That, that was extremely thorough, uh well thought out um and from the heart, and I don't think you can ask for any more than that. What I would propose we do now procedurally, following uh our agenda, is that we would vote to affirm an update to our Road Back Plan as outlined by Dr. Grugio under 11.1, which is old business. And at that time, we would have a full board discussion after a motion and a second. And that will allow us to proceed now to our student reps if they are present. It's summertime, so it's okay if they're not, but if they are, we will go to student reps. And if not, we will go to public comment and we will listen to all the public comment uh that anyone cares to offer. So I'll, I'll first ask if our student reps are, are present with us tonight.
Uh, Mr. Castellano, I have not seen them log in. I know they were invited, uh but did give them the option and I don't see them on here. Um. We usually don't have a summer update. I know we like to involve them, uh but they didn't, they were invited. Okay.
That's fine. Perfect. All right. And so then what we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead to, to our public comment. I want to remind everyone that um we do need your name and address. Um, we are going to limit comment to three minutes. Uh, and please be advised that we cannot discuss personnel or litigation. Uh, also, it may be that a complex question would require someone to get back you with a response.
Okay, we do have a caller, Mr. Castellano. Can you go ahead and state your name and address, please?
I'm Kathy Wazin, EHTEA President.
Go ahead with your public comment.
First, I would like to thank uh Dr. Grugio and all the administrators for this decision. I know it was not easy. I was in many of the meetings with you and shared the angst about what is the best decision for our students and our staff. There is no debate that we all want to be back to normal. We all want life to go back to the way it was. Every member of the EHTEA feels that way. Every person I've ever talked to out in the public feels the same way. But there is an issue we have never experienced in my career and the careers of many other educators that have taught for much longer than I have, and that is the coronavirus. We have to make decisions on what is best for the health and safety of our students, and notice, I'm putting students first. Our students and our staff and parents. The decision that Dr. Grugio and her team has made tonight ensures we are taking those considerations that have been handed down by the State Department of Education, by NJA, and there might be like two other checklists out there, that we are taking them seriously, we are addressing them, and we are preparing our schools for a time when we can organize and feel that the very best is to cure the safety and well-being of students and staff. I could go on tonight, and as Dr. Grugio was talking, I was checking off all my speech here uh of the items that she already listed. Um, all of what she said is there's so much information out there. One day you're being told you can do this, the next day you're being told you can't. So Dr. Grugio was faced with two letters, one from the State Department and one from NJA that I sent her today. And in those letters, I often say, yes, she can more or less guarantee. Now, some things, I think, if you've done that kind of letter out in the first place. But this hearing, in those letters, and I have not read the state letter, but I, I know the NGA very well. In those letters, it was stated the things that have to be in place for students to return to school. We are not a di- a district where we have 10 kids in a classroom. We are a huge district as Dr. Grugio stated. And to be able to have all of our school, our, our children come back on a hybrid schedule is going to require a lot of discussion, planning and implementing protocol in place. We don't have the time for that. Nine days before school starts, before the staff is in, there's not enough time. Your staff is willing and able to do whatever they have to do, but they deserve the professional development that it takes for them to do that. And right now, we don't have enough time to get that in. With this added time of remote learning, we will be able to add PD for our staff to continue the ongoing education that the staff needs to provide the best form of instruction for the students of Egg Harbor Township. I applaud Dr. Grugio and her staff for standing tall in this moment and choosing her students and staff over risking the health and safety. It has been no easy task. I can tell you, I have, I have taken phone calls from teachers who love what they're doing, but maybe I should retire. Um, I don't know, what should I do? I, I'm not sure. I love my teaching career, but I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm worried about going in the building. I'm, I'm not sure it's safe. I'm not sure that uh we wouldn't be spreading the virus um in every classroom. And the answers to those teachers and the, and the answer I gave most of them was, don't give up, don't give up what you love. There will be a way. We will find a way that we can all be back and we can all be doing what we love and be with the children that we love. So though I know out in the public, they're may, I, I'm sure it's causing all kinds of angst on parents right now and people are scurrying to think of what they're going to do, but please keep in mind that the decision here was made for what is the safest way to protect our students and our staff. Again, I want to applaud Dr. Grugio, and if I do not say that Steve Santilli is one of the best people in this world, people will be forever angry at me. But in earnest, I have worked closely with all the administrators and I want to thank them for including me on meetings that I didn't necessarily have to be in, but I appreciate that they let me in. And they heard my voice and they heard the voices of the members of the EHTEA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wazin, uh very much. Um, uh, that um item is in fact on the agenda, and I do want to remind future callers that this um comment period is for agenda items. Uh, at, at some point, uh my memory, my memory has been jogged, uh jogged, Dr. Grugio. I think we may want to touch on the, the Talons piece and what we're gonna try to do for families in the short term, uh whenever would be an appropriate time for that, but we'll go, if you want to do that now or go for our next caller or.
No, that, that's a good point. I apologize. I did have that um in my notes somewhere, and here it is. Yes. Um, the Talons program will be held um at, at the elementary schools between 7:00 and 5:30 PM um each day. Uh, there's a $25 registration fee and it would be $50 uh per day, and this is less than our area childcare providers, and we would issue a 10% discount for siblings. Um, we will file the executive order 149 um where it states that there needs to be a 10 to 1 ratio, and this is for um like the summer, summer camps and childcare that was in place over the summer with some school districts and camps. Um, there were um 40 kids per site and it's first come, first served. It will entails health screening, social distancing, masks, meals, recreation opportunities, homework, health, virtual learning, um enrichment and mindfulness. Uh, we will be reaching out to also some business partners in the district to see who would be interesting in, interested in hosting any what we call ed pods or parent pods, but um this is um something that we feel is important that we are offering our parents. And um, hats off to Mr. Santilli um and Ms. Kristen Boyd, um who've done a lot of work in a short amount of time uh to get this information to me and be able to provide this to the public. So Mr. Santilli, um I will allow you to add to um that information if need be.
Thank you, Dr. Grugio. Um, first, hats off to, to Mrs. Boyd. Um, in a very short turnaround time, uh she was able to, to work feverishly to, to be able to see what we can do to be able to best service the uh community. Um, you know, this hasn't been an easy decision for, for uh, for all of us. And ultimately, um there are still a lot of factors that need to be worked out, but the end goal is going to be able to be able to provide a service um to those in need. Um, I would suggest that um, you know, the community continue to follow not just um the district website and also social media for at EHTNJ schools, but also to um be able to follow the Talons um webpage uh as well as their Facebook page. A lot of information will be forthcoming there as we put together the pieces um over the next uh week or so um to be able to make sure that we uh be able to provide a service that, that's going to support the community at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Santilli, and also um Mr. Castellano to, to add to some of the ideas that we have. I, I mean, there's some parents wondering like, oh, my gosh, kindergarten kids or my elementary kids, even high school kids, I don't even know who these teachers are going to be. We have a meet, greet and get um process um that we're working on and please allow us some time uh this week to work with our administrators. We have administrators meeting tomorrow of how children can um come um to probably an outside setup um with proper social distancing, um scheduled appointments, masks in place and all that, and at least get some kind of idea of what their teacher looks like from the nose up um and what the students look like from the nose up, um and at least be able to say, hi, you know, I'm Kim Grugio. I, I'm your, your um, you know, English teacher for ninth grade this year, and the student to introduce themselves. Um, then perhaps direct them to an area where they can get their textbook um for that course and any resources that they need, and then maybe go to a next section and then grab their uh Chromebook if that's needed as well. So that's all, all in the works. Um, we're also um looking into some social, emotional um help, if you will, that we, possibly we can set up something, but um I encourage parents, you know, case by case basis, we will work uh to accommodate those social, emotional needs as well as our specialized program um for our special education students. So uh that's, that's um stuff that we have thought about, we've discussed and we, we are working on.
Dr. Grugio, can I um interrupt and ask a question about the Talons program while we're talking about it?
Sure. Okay, there you are.
Who did you say would be in charge of the Talons program? Who's going to be responsible for the children?
Um, that would be Mr. Santilli oversees that program with Ms. Kristen Boyd, who is the coordinator of our um programs. Yes, she's our.
Who is that are doing the instructing in the program?
Uh, if, I would say it would be open to um any staff, the current staff or teachers if they would like. That's, that's up to them. But we would also may have to um advertise those positions. Uh, Mr. Santilli, have you discussed that and?
Yeah, so um, so ultimately what would occur is during the course of the day, of course, you know, the majority of our staff will be um focused on virtual learning, uh you know, since we are 100% remote, um so we will be working again um to fill positions. Um, you know, for our staff, for instance, like certificated staff or paraprofessionals or the like, um of course, after the virtual day would be done, um we would certainly um have them come into the program to be able to support like they normally would. Um, we are going to be working to uh come up with a resolution or solution for the actual course of the day when remote learning is taking place. So we're gonna work um on that. Uh, in addition, uh we have site supervisors at each location. The locations would be expanded um based off of um interest and need. Um, so for instance, right now, we have the ability based on our license thing to hold um uh before and after care or really just Talons care um during the course of the day. Um, either at Miller School, Swift School, Sleigh Ball and Davenport. Um, typically uh before care would only occur at the three elementaries and then we were uh typically bussing every, all of our students to Talons uh at Miller for the afternoons. Um, that may evolve and change, and we may utilize all of those buildings to be able to, again, meet the needs of the guidelines that are provided through the state for before and after care programs like Talons. Um, you know, because we have uh very stringent rules that we need to follow as well, as well as uh different ratios, which are now basically, um I believe 10 students in a particular area uh in proximity to an adult. Um, before it was higher uh than that, but of course now with, with COVID restrictions, we have to adhere to that as well. So there'd be a lot of that information coming step by step. Um, you know, information for parents to make sure that they are uh comfortable. We've been actually communicating with a lot of our outside uh providers as well to see what's been working for them and, and what doesn't work. Um, so we're learning from the things that they've had in place for the summer. Um, so that's been helpful. And um, you know, again, we're gonna follow those, those guidelines, uh health checks and, and, and the like, use of PPE and so on.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, I was just curious because I know during the school year, our teachers usually head up the program, and I was wondering how they were planning, how you were having them plan on doing that if they were teaching virtually. So that answered my question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So thank you all for that uh very, very important piece. So thank you all for that, uh, very, very important piece to this whole equation. And, uh, remember board members, we will, we will be, uh, having the opportunity to, to do our, uh, ask our questions and have our conversation when we hit, uh, eleven point one on the agenda. So I want to go back and see if there are public comments on the agenda and hear from any of our public.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. There is, um, somebody on hold. Next in queue. Okay. Please state your name and address. You are live streaming.
Uh, yes.
Nope, we lost them. Sorry. One second.
I'm, I'm thankfully you called me back.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. Name and address was Derek. Sorry. Name and address because you got cut off. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. It, uh, Derek Saglano, ten ninety-five Summers Point Road.
Okay. Go ahead with your public comment.
Okay. My question pertains to those who, um, paid a deposit for three-year-old preschool. I have two twins that we've already made the four hundred dollar deposit. Um, my question is, will that money be offered to be refunded? Um, should the school system, um, proceed with either partial or full virtual learning?
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know if we're answering or what we're doing.
Have
We can add it to our list of items that need to be addressed and, and answered in a Q and A.
So we're gonna, we'll, we'll make sure that we get that, that answer to you as soon as we have that worked out. Cause that, that's a very fair and important question. And we will get that to you and we will make sure that everyone knows the answer to that as well.
Okay. You're live streaming. Name and address, please. Go ahead with your public comment.
Um, okay. So I I'm a participant in this. Um, but my question is, um, about technology, um, and providing the students with the Chromebooks. Now that we're going full virtual till almost November first. Um, I know that in the springtime, um, being home with two kids, um, and myself being a teacher in Galway, we were like sharing devices and just having a hard time, um, meeting deadlines. Um, I was just wondering how you were going to, um, make, possibly provide the kids with Chromebooks that have all the apps and have things that they need and Google Classroom on the computers, um, on the Chromebook without having to go buy, um, new ones. Um, and also like I have one in high school and like there's, I know that there was deadlines that had, you know, their assignment had to be done by twelve o'clock, you know, this day, this day. Um, and if there were deadlines and we're sharing devices, how that was going to be, um, you know, just dealt with.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, that does. I, I, I think, thank you for that. And I think the short answer is we're going to do our best to get our Chromebooks and technology out to those who need them. Uh, you know, absolutely. Um, and I'll see if there's any additional detail that, uh, Kim or Steve might want to add to that.
Yep. Part of the plan. You answered it well. Uh, absolutely part of the plan. Uh, it may take another survey to see what people need. Um, but definitely part of the plan. Uh, we are, we are equipped and ready to, um, distribute Chromebooks and resources that, that students need.
So thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay. We do have another caller. Uh, name and address, please.
Um, Julia Hunter, two fifteen Winslow Drive at Carver Township.
And your comment?
Um, my first question, I have two questions. Is that okay?
Go for it. Yep. Three minutes.
All right. Um, okay. Um, one is, are they planning on sending the special ed or the M D classes back into the building? And if so, or if not, how will that work for those kids and teachers?
Okay. And your other question or comment?
And my other question or comment was last week is discussed about having the meetings with the public again. And I want to know if the board will continue to stream the meetings as, um, so that parents can still partake in them, um, during this time when we're in the pandemic. And I also wanted to find out if there's a policy about board members on their cell phones during the meetings, just because I found it really distracting last week.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll go in reverse order. Um, so we are going to continue, uh, to go by majority vote of how the board wants to conduct the meetings, whether live or virtual. Um, and, but regardless, they will still be broadcast out to the public. So whether they are live or virtual, they will still be broadcast out to the public. Um, no matter what. Um, I, I, and, and I, I hear your point as well. Um, and I think that, you know, board members need to, you know, um, be focused on what they're doing when they're at a board meeting. You know, I'll just leave it at that. Uh, and, uh, um, special ed, uh, I don't have that answer off the top of my head, but I'm going to look to our good doctor at least to get us started.
Uh, yes, um, definitely part of our conversation, uh, conversation, um, really focusing first on the related services that, uh, students, um, need. Um, so that we are working, I know Mr. Santilli has worked with, um, the, um, special education department. And it was a conversation that we all had this morning in our morning meeting. Uh, I don't know, Steve, you have any more? If you don't, it's understandable, but yes, we will be addressing, um, uh, students and the specialized needs that they have, um, in a plan that we would like to roll out. Steve, you have anything?
Sure, Dr. Grucho. Um, yeah, we have been, uh, talking about this at length. Um, ultimately, uh, what will occur is that if we're able to, um, safely, uh, support the needs of students, um, you know, with specialized programming, uh, and services, uh, in, in person setting, uh, we'll certainly do our best to, uh, accommodate that need. However, that is, uh, something that is going to be forthcoming. Um, initially, uh, that, that focus may be, uh, started in a, in a remote setting, uh, with the possibility of, of transitioning in the future. Um, however, uh, our case managers, our special education supervisors and the like, uh, will make sure that we are clearly communicating. Um, you know, to our parents to make sure that, um, you know, we, we are transparent in, in meeting those needs.
Very good. Excellent questions and, and we thank you.
And, and we will add these questions to our, um, new repository of question and answers.
Okay. I do have one. I have two callers on the line. I'll just do one. Hold on. All right. You are, um, live streaming. Name and address, please.
Thank you. Stacy DiNaffo, twenty Clover Hill Circle.
Go ahead with your comment.
Um, I do have a comment. I am an educator in Atlantic County, so I do appreciate all the hard work that has been done by our educators and leaders in education during this time. I have also always been very pleased with my children's education in the district, but for the first time, I am extremely disappointed in the position that the district and the unions have taken to choose to go all virtual. Um, I feel this is a disservice to our kids as far as their education and to their ability to learn. And I feel that, um, there are other districts who have had plenty of time to put plans in place. And that the reasons we are now given not to open schools for even a hybrid education are simply excuses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we thank you for your comment.
Are we ready for the next one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. If you want to mute your television, you are next. Um, name and address, please.
Uh, Michelle Linkrath, eleven eighteen Lakeside Drive at Carver Township.
Your, go ahead with your public comment.
I wanted to thank the school members for all their, um, work and commitment during this very difficult time. I am one of the parents who are very pleased that the district is going all virtual. I think that you're keeping the safe, safety of the children and the teachers, uh, as your first priority. Um, one question I do have is about sports. Will fall sports be occurring this year?
I didn't hear that.
Thank you.
Be occurring this year.
Will fall sport, sports be occurring this year? So I, I, I'll just start it. So I believe that, uh, we're waiting at least at the high school level. So at the middle school level, the Cape Atlantic League has canceled the season. But at the high school level so far, uh, N J S I A A has not given word what they're doing. Uh, we're proceeding as if there will be, but even if N J S I A A cancels formal, we will still have our kids, um, engaged in their activities to the greatest extent we can. Um, and I will pass that off for more detail.
I'm gonna, um, have Dr. Herey shed some, some light on that. He, um, does have information, um, on athletics and he oversees our athletic department and, um, is very well in tuned with the N J S I A.
Thank you, Dr. Grucio. Right now there is a, uh, there's a lot of discussion going on in Robbinsville, the headquarters of N J S I A in terms of what's going to happen with the athletic program. But Mr. Castellano did capture it, its current state right, uh, accurately. We are into phase two of the training with our, uh, football team. The other teams have began, uh, their conditioning training. Uh, full practices will be starting soon, but they will stop on September first. Uh, part of the A N J S I A regulations is that there'll be no extracurricular activities, interscholastic sports from September first. So I believe the date is September fourteenth. September fourteenth will start the traditional practice sessions with one scrimmage being permitted during that period of time. The athletic program or interscholastic athletic program will begin in earnest on October first. Um, again, if there's anything else that comes forward from, uh, N J S I A, we will certainly, uh, notify the board member and the school district immediately.
Thank you, Dr. Herey.
I do have another caller.
Thank you for that and good answers.
Hi Jen, uh, you are now live streaming. Please state your name and address.
Jennifer Farmley, one two eight Ruby Drive.
And your public comment.
First, I would say that, um, I'm an educator as well in a different district. And I know the hours that everyone has put into making plans and trying to reform everything to make all of the educational situations best for our students. So I want to say thank you. I am one of the educators that one hundred percent believes in-person education is detrimental to our students. Um, I would fight wholeheartedly to see my students. I am heartbroken that I don't know yet, but I may not have the opportunity to meet my students in person when the school year starts because we have not received where anything has changed at this point. Um, but that being said, I want the public to know that all of this that is happening, it is not the educator's fault. It is not the teacher's fault. It is not the administrator's fault. It comes down from the state. So please, anyone that feels poorly about this decision, please don't take it out on the teachers or think poorly about them because I know that they are doing the best they can in this situation. Um, my, moving past this, um, my daughter, she heard me speaking to my husband that she's not going back to school to start the school year and she broke down crying because all she wants to do is her teacher. She is going into second grade. Um, my son's starting the school, new school in kindergarten. So I do want to ask, and I know it was mentioned before, to have some sort of way for especially the younger kids to have some sort of in-person meeting with their teachers. I think it's very important to make them feel comfortable. Um, and also to maybe even see their classmates. You know, it might be half their faces, but I really think that that would be important because I, I mean, as a middle school teacher and I don't know how I'm going to build rapport and I'm thinking about my poor kindergartner and how is he going to build rapport? So if you could do your best to make an in-person, um, opportunity for our students, again, specifically the younger ones to meet their classmates, um, as well as their teachers in person. I, I mean, I know I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment and that's certainly something that we would take a look at.
And I do have another caller in queue if we're ready for them. Okay. You are now live streaming. State your name and address, please.
Um, opportunity for Jessica's date.
And your, um, your address, please.
One twenty-nine Crystal Lake Drive.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Thank you for that comment.
If you want to mute your television, we are listening for your comment now.
Okay. Hi, um, I have a special needs child who is in a self-contained class. And I'm just wondering about what you are doing for those type of children. Um, we really, they are in a very small classroom to begin with, so they can do, um, social distancing and things like that. And I'm just wondering if you're not going to do in-person instruction for these children? If you'll be able, if I will be able to send my child to a school district that is doing in-person instruction?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We know that, uh, we know that our special needs population is important and that's, uh, that's something we will be considering. Right, Doc?
You got it.
Okay. Public comment. Please state your name and address. You're live streaming.
Hi, my name is Mary Rivercheck. I, uh, my address is one one five West Kennedy Drive. I had children in elementary and now that we're going all virtual, this is even if we weren't going all virtual, but you had a couple days when they were virtual. Are the kids allowed to bring home or have worksheets? Um, or even, I know they had, um, like Pearson's A paperwork book that they can work on. Because being on virtual the whole entire time is not good for their eyes, especially if the kid has gone to headaches. Um, so are there other ways that you guys are going to teach the kids? Um, through paperwork versus just all virtual for the six, four, six hours, however long it is? That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. I mean, good points, which we will consider. We're going to do our very best for you.
Okay. You are now live streaming. Please state your name and address.
Kristoff Breisner, three thirty-six Superior Road at Carver Township.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Well, should, should I wait for my comments or?
This is it now. You're live streaming right now.
Okay.
So go ahead with your comment.
Well, I think personally that, um, keeping kids at school, uh, at home, full time and doing the virtual, it's, it's affecting their mental state. My, my son who is going to seventh grade, um, he starts showing depressions, sign of depression and, and I think, you know, this going to school would definitely benefit him rather than staying at home and doing the virtual school. And I think what, what school and the district is doing in the entire state, it's, it's ridiculous. And it's, it's totally inappropriate because, you know, this is their kids' life and health at stake. And I personally believe that we are infringing on our, on our rights with this decision, keeping the kids at home full time.
Okay.
And this is not only my personal opinion, but there are other, you know, parents that actually have kids in Ed Harbor Township School. And they have exactly same opinion about this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we appreciate your comment and we all want what's best for our, for our students.
And, and I, and I just may add that we, we do have plans, uh, for a counseling corner and to address social emotional issues. So, so, uh, to the caller, um, I please encourage you to reach out to your school counselor, principal, um, whoever you feel comfortable um whoever you feel comfortable reaching out to, and we will be sure to address your son, your concerns about your son and your son's difficulties. Um just keep in mind, our schools are planning to get to the point where we can reopen. Uh we just need some time, and we just ask for some patience. Um but again, your feedback makes us better uh at what we do and who we are. So um, you know, I I I've placed that note here um in on my notebook and um you know, again, I encourage you to reach out to your school. We are here for you. We embrace with open arms. And uh we won't, we don't want any of our children to feel um depressed or withdrawn. Um school is important. I recognize that, but the health, safety, and welfare of everyone, um you know, is important as well. And um again, I encourage you to make contact with the school. We are here for you.
Okay, you are live streaming. Name and address, please.
Amber Umple, 6512 Millroad.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Hi, everyone. Hey, everyone. Um this is just a comment. I just wanted to um first of all, say thank you guys so much for allowing the kids um at the high school to go back to sports. Um the athletic department and nurses, they did a phenomenal job um setting everything up and every day just having the kids come in. Um everyone stayed safe and I'm just having a a great opportunity, um you know, being out there on the field. Um second of all, I just wanted to um share with you all, I I know that this is a tough time that you guys are facing right now, and um and I understand your situation. I understand we're the largest district and other schools around us are, you know, making their decisions, and I I know that that's hard um for you all, and I just wanted to uh thank everyone. Um all the hard work you guys are doing. I know you're getting beat up out there, and I just say, say strong and um know that um you know, we're all, we all need to be mindful of uh, you know, what's going on in the world, and also that, you know, our children's safety is number one, and anyone to um suggest that this board or this central administration um isn't taking this lightly, but that's not true. I know you guys are working really hard, and I know that, you know, you guys have had your backs against the wall, and um I I just appreciate what you've done for my girls and my kids, and you know, for for those um that are thankful and and have some, have had some grateful hearts in this uh district. I think that we need to start looking at things positive, and instead of getting on here and stating the obvious, we we really need to rally together and kind of come outside the box and think creatively, and I try to be more supportive. So just like I know my time's running out, I just wanted to thank you guys and um, you know, um where anything you guys are doing moving forward, um you know, just know that there there are a handful of us out there that are very supportive and we're thankful that you're trying your best and uh you know, just keep your chin up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Thank you. Stay in touch. Don't be a stranger.
We have another caller. Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Valentina Troblova.
And your address?
5 Forest Field Court, A Harbor Township.
Thank you. You are now live streaming. What is your comment?
Um yes, I have a question uh regarding my children. Uh one of them is going to the kindergarten, and two others are going to second grade. Um two of my children really struggled when they had to do everything virtually. And I'm really concerned about the kindergarten because he doesn't know how to help use computers. He does not, he does not know how to read or write. So would like to know what material you will have um to help him learn that. Um I guess that's my main concern. I would like to have some sort of sheet so he can practice that and someone more in person uh attention so he can learn how to read. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment, and we hear you. And we will do our best for you.
Yes, Mr. Castellano, that is noted, and that will be shared tomorrow in our administrators meeting.
And we have another caller. Please hold. You are now live streaming. Name and address, please.
Hi, this is Kathleen Collins for 118 Oakland Avenue. I am a lifelong resident of VHT and a teacher in the district, and I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Grushio for stepping up as a leader who's brave enough to make the tough decision that our governor isn't brave enough or willing to make for the health and safety of our students, their families, staff, administrators, and their respective families. I also want to say thank you to all of the administrators, Mrs. Wazin, and all those involved in this process for the many hours you put in and your dedication to our students, families, and staff in making the best possible decision in the current COVID situation. You have done the right thing, and I just wanted to do the right thing also by saying thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
And we have another caller. Go ahead. You're live streaming. Name and address, please.
Bury Albarda, 206 Westwood Road, A Harbor Township.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Good evening, board and administration. Um and first of all, I want to thank you guys for everything you know you do. I know this was a really hard decision to make, and um I honestly knew that um eventually this would happen, and it's probably gonna happen to all the schools. And like Amber said, thank you for letting the kids back on the field at the high school because it does really affect their um their social and emotional health and as um as much as hopefully they can play their season, but I like the fact that you guys said there's gonna be something going on even if um the games are pulled. Um the one thing I did want to mention is when you're getting together with administration to come up with a plan is I just want to mention how important it is for the consistency for the kids to have to be on the um the meets or the the classes at a certain time each day so that they're up and they're doing their work, and as many in-person sessions as possible would also really be helpful. But the other thing I think that the parents need so that we're able to help our children, since most of us are still working, is we need lists of what is due each week from each teacher, and that way we can keep on top of our kids to make sure they're doing what is necessary. But again, I want to thank you guys for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
We got it. Noted. Thank you very much, Terry. Thanks for the call and the comments.
And we have another caller. You are live streaming. Name and address, please.
Michelle Sawyer, 6 Gravelbend Road.
Go ahead with your public comment.
I want to first thank everyone for all of their hard work and making these difficult decisions. Um I'm a teacher in the district, and I'm just wondering um will we be able to get into our classrooms to collect materials that we will need to do remote learning and um possibly maybe even do some recorded lessons from our classrooms?
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Go ahead, Doc.
Yeah, the answer is yes. We we will be, um as I noted in my um communication to the staff this past Monday, we'll be, we will be in touch about teacher schedules and expectations for teachers and when teachers can come in. Um and you know, what you need in your classroom, optional uh to be in your classroom. So we'll be putting all that out for teachers.
And we have another caller. Okay, we have another public comment. Um Mark Senior, I did lose you. If you want to give us a call back, I'd appreciate it. In the meantime, we have a call. Go ahead with your name and address.
Uh, Resonant Ball. Um so first, I want to thank you all for taking the time to hold this uh meeting and fill us in with all the new information that we're getting. But when we first went all uh virtual back in March, I felt that the students weren't adequately taught. Uh so how are we better preparing the teachers to be teaching virtually since it is, you know, a huge learning step for them? And I'm also wondering how if we're making the students go virtual, how are we allowing fall sports to happen? Because it's uh more in-person, or it's a higher contact risk. So how are we allowing fall sports to happen even if we're not allowing students to go in school where they'd be socially distanced and wearing masks?
Okay, thank you.
So I guess two pieces of that. Prof- professional development, absolutely, yes. Doc, if there's anything you want to ask, uh you know?
Yes, I I had difficulty hearing the whole question, but I heard something about um virtual learning uh schedule and how it will be different than the spring. It's absolutely gonna be different than the spring. As you know, the spring, we we jumped in the um into that, you know, and we we put something together the best that we can. Um we want all students and teachers to be able to follow a schedule, just like they went to, were going to school. So that schedule um will impale um every class that they have in a day, uh subject areas that they have in a day. And our teachers will be um provided professional development starting September 1st. And it worked out through our plan um from now until um October 23rd. And what I mean by that is there's gonna be a day and an opportunity for um our teachers to um have professional development along the way, collaborate with each other, to talk about, you know, the needs that they have. But um to the students, you will be following your schedules. So high school students, they'll be ready to be up and ready to go to first period, and you you will follow your periods, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, you know, through period 8, um until um the abbreviated date ends, which is gonna be probably around 12:30 or so. So those schedules will be released soon, but I assure everyone, it will not be the schedule that you followed in the spring. It will be more like um going back to school and being in school for the allotted amount of time, meeting with your teachers, going through your courses, um and it it would be virtual. But being prepared that when we go back, um if and when we go back, whenever that may be, that it's an easy transition. So now that you're physically walking in the building, you know that period 1, you have Mrs. Smith, period 2, you have Mr. Jones, and you would follow that schedule. So we want to make that transition as easy as possible and make it um relevant, and we we want some sense of normalcy um when we're in this virtual environment.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have another comment. Okay, you're live streaming. Name and address, please.
Katie Coggins, 103 Seaside.
And your public comment.
I just wanted to call and um send to Dr. Grushio, um and everyone that worked so hard to make this decision. I know that it was not easy, um and I just wanted to show my support and thank everyone because um you guys are doing what's right. You're doing what is best for our kids. And I know that there's a lot of parents uh complaining, but um I know that you guys work really hard to help every child um in every way that you can, and I just wanted to show uh my appreciation for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
And we do have another caller. Go ahead. Name and address, please.
This is Mark Kodeski, 148 Blackman Road, A Harbor Township, and I'm supervisor of the Arts Department for the District.
Go ahead with your comment.
I just wanted to give a brief preface just to let the public know because I've received numerous emails just since this board meeting has been broadcast that the Arts Department is going to continue along the same uh path we went before with producing uh virtual works aboard uh and making all sorts of combinations, whether it's ordering air drying clay for a ceramic glass because we don't have access to the kiln, and using our two music technology teachers and our new digital music lab to make sure that our kids can still create music and also promote music. And also let you know that uh, you know, we have asked the superintendent that whatever a cop, whatever the governor says is allowed for outdoor activities, it also applies for the marching band. So as long as there's gatherings of of people allowed outdoors regardless of of whether the the doors to the physical buildings are open or shut, uh we plan on contributing to our community and and keeping that activity going for our kids and working with the administration uh to make sure that we can do the best we can in doing all we can. And I also want to thank the Board of Education and and my bosses for, you know, having the the courage and the insight to make tough decisions and do what they have to do, and we appreciate it, and uh we're gonna do the very best we can to keep things cranking. So that's what we have for you. Thank you very much for your support for the event.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. K. Keep that music and keep those arts coming.
Go ahead with your name and address, please.
Mark Senior, 302 Montpelier, A Harbor Township, New Jersey.
Go ahead with your public comment. You're live streaming. Go ahead with your comment.
Hello, my name's Mark Senior. I live at 302 Montpelier, A Harbor Township, New Jersey. I'd just like to thank everyone for all the hard work that they do every single day. Uh I have a child who's a type 1 diabetic who has excelled in this school district uh athletically. She's excelled through both the school district and in the programs offered through A Harbor Township. My greatest concern is that she is not able to participate actively in the school programs that are offered, for instance, for basketball and baseball. And academically, this child has exceeded all of our expectations. I would ask that you make every effort possible or allow our children to return to school to be educated in the way that our taxes are provided. I do respect the very fact that everyone's concerned about COVID-19, but what we must be conscious of is that we all have a job to do, and we cannot allow our children to be displaced. So I just ask you, allow them to come back to the classroom. There are spaces within gym gymnasiums, libraries, classrooms, outside. Let our kids come to school. Allow the teachers to educate them. And most of all, I thank you for all the work that you do. God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you.
Okay, you're live streaming. Name and address, please.
Hi, Debbie Off, 27 Stony Creek Drive.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Thank you. I have two questions. One is the survey that was sent out. I I it's very interesting to me to know the results, um maybe see what the percentage of what parents wanted and what we're receiving. And could a survey out to come as this goes along, if you can make it public so parents can see, you know, the end results of the surveys? My second question is regarding the virtual learning. I heard you saying it's going to be more like classes, which is wonderful. But is it going to be videotapes? Is it going to be YouTube teaching? Is it going to be the teacher live? And on that part of it, are they going to be sitting there for four hours or do they get 20 minute break here, 10 minute break there? And that's my question. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate those comments. And I think as we've stated earlier, we will be revamping our virtual programs. And if there's anything you want to add, Doc, but thank you for that comment.
No, I think you handled it. I was just writing down the question as well as the needs. But yes, there'll be breaks. The children will be following the schedule. It will be live instruction, but it may be a combination of videos or taped lessons. It's depending on the presentation. Sometimes teachers will present something in video fashion and then go back and teach to that video or explain that video or have class collaboration regarding that video. So, you know, it's going to be a combination of all kinds of things, the things that happen in classrooms as well.
Okay, we do have another caller. You are live streaming, go ahead with your name and address.
City of Trowbridge, 1449 Summer 22th, A Harbert Township.
Go ahead with your comment.
I'm just curious, what does the survey show as far as how many, one is the hybrid plan versus how many?
Okay, is that your comment?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I had a little trouble hearing, but I mean, I think, you know, just in terms of survey, you know, I just want everyone to understand that we take public input very, very seriously. But what folks have to understand is we got new guidance Wednesday night. So the surveys predated Executive Order 175 that we just got last Wednesday night.
We do have another caller if you're ready. You are live streaming, go ahead with your name and address, please.
My name is Jeffrey Kurtz. I'm 104 Lighthouse Lane, A Harbert Township. I have two things I'd like to address. First off, thank you guys for making the hard decision. With this, for the first thing, is there going to be a way for the parents to share information so we can have like study groups for the kids and such? My daughter's going to the third grade and it's good social skills for the kids. Plus, they also do a lot of group activities, so there's something like that for them. Second thing would be after this pandemic calms down or whatever else with that, we need to have some sort of like cleaning schedule for the school. So I know you guys are looking at two days on, then having like a day of cleaning and another study group for the next two days, the other day cleaning. We just need to make sure it's like structured like that for that whenever we get to that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, yes. All good ideas, all to be taken into consideration. And we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. If Stephanie Ponzetti is still listening or Kim Barnes, please try to call back. We were on hold and we lost you in between. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, name and address, please.
Thank you very much, yes.
If you can mute your television, you are live streaming.
Okay, Kim Kramer, 101 La Mesa Court.
And what is your public comment?
Just like many of the comments that came before me, I don't envy the tough position that the decision makers are in. So I do want to thank the board and the administrators for meeting constantly all summer long. I'm sure it was a very time consuming task, so I do thank you for all of your efforts. I guess my question is, with the decision that's going remote, I understand you're going to have to revamp some, you know, pieces of the plan because it's going to be totally remote now. I am just thinking for the bigger picture here, are teachers going to still be reporting to their building? And if that's the case, how many of those teachers will then have small children that are at home unattended because those teachers are physically reporting to the buildings? Or are teachers going to be able to be remote as well, just like the students?
Thank you.
Doc, I believe that they would be remaining remote for the most part, but I'll defer.
Yes, Mr. Castellano, and that's going to vary district to district. Again, because our district is extremely large, having all teachers in the building with virtual instruction presents a bandwidth problem for us. We reviewed this over and over and over and the feedback and guidance that we got from our IT department is we simply do not have enough bandwidth to accommodate everyone in the building. So again, we will be communicating with our teachers and because I do hear there are some teachers that would like to come in and be in their classroom and use their resources and transmit from there and teach from there. And quite frankly, I'm fine with that. So it will be optional. And again, we will communicate with our teachers how that would work, who's interested in coming in. Because of course, I kind of have to get a number because I don't want a bandwidth problem to occur. And if that does happen where we have an abundance of teachers that want to come in, then maybe we have to put them on a rotating basis. But we've thought of all those things. We went down into those rabbit holes and discussed that situation. And we are prepared to communicate with the teachers, gain feedback from them, and then, you know, be flexible and offer options to them.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Okay, we have another caller. You are live streaming, name and address, please.
It's Alena Mandini, 206 Benton Avenue, A Harbert Township.
Go ahead with your public comment.
I missed the beginning of the meeting, so I'm just trying to figure out what changed from them having the two campuses to now having nothing when the cases are going down in Alana County. And if they're doing virtual, why are they sticking to a half a day schedule? I don't really see how much they can learn in 20 minutes. My son's in advanced classes and last time he played video games all day because he was done his work in 10 minutes. And I just don't understand how they can play sports but they can't go to school. And per team club, I mean, do they get to do that or is it all about sports and learning comes last?
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that comment. I think if you go back and review when this plays, you'll have your questions answered.
Okay, you are live streaming, name and address, please.
Bethany Lagretto, 118 Leo Avenue.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Okay. My question is, we knew for two months this was a possibility of going all virtual. Yet every comment and every question people were asking, we should get in the "I don't know" or "we'll look into it." As a parent, I have to have a backup plan for my child. As a teacher, you have to have a backup plan in case you're sick for a substitute. How come we're being left in the dark of what's going on and just getting it all, look into it? Why does it feel like nobody's prepared for this?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comment. I think there are some details we need to look in into, but I think we are overall very well prepared.
I would also add that I encourage the public to tune into our website and also social media where I release every Monday a district update in Dr. Gugio's district newsletter. So I do communicate updates every week as to what we're doing and where we are in terms of our current reality.
Okay, you are live streaming. Please state your name and address again.
Monica Pahida Calix, address 2725 605.
Go ahead with your public comment.
My comment, question is the hybrid student. So I guess we hear we're going virtual. My question is about the sport. Are sports going to continue or sports going to be canceled till further notice? Kids have started practicing. So I just want to know when we're going to be informed on how it's going to proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, so we did answer that one already briefly, that sports will continue in accordance with the state association. If the season is canceled competitively, we will still make sure our students stay as active as we are able to keep them in there, whether it's sports, the arts, whatever clubs or activities that they're interested in, we're going to do our best for them. Anything else anyone wants to?
We do have another comment. You are live streaming, please state your name and address.
My son, at 1411 Old Iron Road.
Go ahead with your public comment.
I'm not sure if I missed it, but how are they going to differ how they accommodate for the IEPs this year? As with the IEPs last year, my son struggled greatly. I mean, the teachers, I guess, tried their best, but I mean, he was given the same exact workload with the same exact timeframe that it needed to be returned in, but very little extra help as he requires, you know, like one-on-one.
Thank you.
We appreciate that comment. I'm going to see if Doc wants to chime in. We definitely understand our special needs population. We will do our best for them as we have been under these circumstances.
Exactly, Mr. Castellano, Mr. Santilli. I know you've been working closely like almost every day with our special education supervisors as we're waiting for a director of special education to join us. And you've had those discussions as well about IEPs and meeting the needs of our students, which is very, very important to us.
And I do not have any callers on cue. If you want to put the slide up to call our number, thanks. Okay, we do have another caller. Please state your name and address. You are live streaming.
Thomas Finnegan, 2062 Ocean Heights Avenue.
Go ahead with your public comment.
I'm just curious if there's going to be any testing or any way to monitor the students, comparing it to what they have learned in school as opposed to remote? Because I know both my children struggled.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, is my short answer.
And we do have another caller. You are live streaming, please go ahead, name and address, please.
Nicole Resnick, 102 Rockport Drive, A Harbert Township.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Okay, I just had, again, I understand the stress that you've all been going through trying to figure out the logistics of everything. I work with childcare for essential employees, so we're constantly, you know, getting different guidelines on a daily basis from the state. So I emphasize what you're going through. I just have a question in regards to come October 23rd. I don't think we're ever going to get to the point where it's, you know, all virtual to 100% back at school. I mean, that would be perfect if it does. So are there plans come, you know, are we going to get kind of updates leading up to October 23rd? Like, we think we can continue with the virtual learning or we are going to introduce this new hybrid thing to see how it goes with that? Just kind of like where your thought process is with all that. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. We're going to do our best to keep you updated through our webpage, social media, through our meetings, and we will be constantly assessing and reassessing the situation as that date nears.
Okay, you are now public streaming, public comment streaming, live streaming. It's been a long day, I'm sorry. Go ahead with your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Patrice Dawson and I reside at 308 Jefferson Avenue. And I'm just going to say that first of all, thank you for all of your hard work. I know back in March it was such a large transition and there were so many different people with many different views. And even the decision that was based for tonight, as like I said, my son is special needs. But I just want to say thank you for taking into consideration. I feel like if this measure saves at least one child, if it saves at least one child, it's all worth it. I'm sure we may have different educational gaps or different things that I'm sure in D-COM we could work, as they say, E H T Strong, to work together to help our children to become where they are. But if this measure saves at least one person, I think it's very well worth it, including our children, our staff members, our teachers, our administrators. So I just wanted to say thank you and guys, keep your heads up and as we say, E H T Strong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Excellent point.
And we have another caller. And we have another caller, you are live streaming, go ahead and repeat your name and address, please.
Jennifer Brady, 112 Douglas Avenue.
Go ahead with your comment.
I came in very late to this, are they starting school in September or is this being pushed back again?
Okay, so I'm gonna recommend first that you, you know, watch, watch the tape of the meeting to get it, you know, to get all that's been shared, but I guess the short answer is, school is starting, however, we are going to be voting shortly to accept, whether to accept administration's recommendation to be virtual for a period of time until October, and then to begin a hybrid of virtual and in-person at that point in time.
Okay, you are live streaming, name and address, please.
Kim Brusher, 301 Hidden Oak Road, thank you guys tonight for the information, I had one question, we are new to the school district, we're military family, and my daughter is gonna be starting kindergarten, my question is, is I'm not understanding the difference between the Talon program versus in-class learning, because it seems like at the Talon program that they would be doing learning and lunch and all that, and I know you pay additional for it, but I guess I'm trying to figure out the difference between the two, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I think we can delineate that.
Yes, we can, Mr. Santilli, if you'd like to do that, go right ahead, I'm delegating tonight, I'd be glad to, but.
Okay, Dr. Gruccio, so ultimately, the Talons program will be there to provide a service to the community, should there be a need to provide really childcare, we'll have the ability to service a specific number of families and students, you know, while we are 100% remote, once that transition begins to take place and we get into hybrid, then of course that model for Talons will change as well, and then of course we'll be able to still continue to service the students that are, let's say, in school for in-person learning, continue to evolve that program moving forward, so that kind of is the differential there, we'll be able to provide supports as needed for virtual instruction as well as, you know, our normal programming, we don't look at it as just childcare, of course, for before and after care, it's really truly an enrichment, you know, experience for the students that participate.
Thank you, thank you very much for that, we are gonna take all questions, we've been running, this has been lengthy, but it's worth it and it's very productive, what I'd like to do is I'm gonna open this public comment period to questions on any topic, I think everyone's interested in one topic, but so that we can combine our comment periods for efficiency sake, any, we will take questions on the agenda and any topic during the rest of this comment period, we will answer, respond to any questions or comments that you have, and we'll combine it into one comment period, so anything you have, let us know, questions, comments, we will take all.
We have no callers in queue, if you want to go ahead and put the sign up. The streaming is delayed about 30 seconds, so we're gonna wait another 30 just to make sure there's no other callers on the line.
And again, we will take questions not only on the agenda, but on anything, questions or comments on any topic now, so that we can consolidate our, our public comment period, we appreciate all the questions and comments that have come in, we've been trying our best to address all of them, they're very important, this is an important meeting, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano, the sign has been up for about a minute, if you want to go ahead and continue with the meeting.
Okay, so again, thank, thank, I wanna thank everyone in the public for questions and comments, they're all very useful and helpful, we did try our best to, to address as many and as much as we could, and I'd encourage everyone to please go back and watch the re-broadcast, so you can especially hear if you missed it, Dr. Gruccio's initial presentation, so with that, I'm gonna try to move us a little expeditiously, we're gonna move into finance operations, and I'm gonna look for a motion and a second, and then we'll, we'll have a discussion with any update, so can I have a motion for 7.1 through 7.7, Mrs. Sullivan?
Mr. Price, I'll second that.
Mr. Price, second, is there any discussion, any update that we need for finance and operations?
Mr. Price, I have a question on purchases, 7.2, would that be coming up now?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question, and I did send an email in and I got a response, but I just want a clarification, it's on the bucket truck, $111,750, it's a Ford F550 bucket truck, just a question as far as the purchase, it was not purchased under state contract, but what was it, put out the competitive bid, I understand that Lilliston Ford responded, but it was put out the competitive bid so that others could bid on this as well, is that correct, I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, thank you for the question, Mr. Price, so with New Jersey state contract purchasing, and actually New Jersey purchasing laws, we were able to purchase directly with a vendor who was awarded a bid or a contract from either the state of New Jersey or one of our ed services commissions or co-ops, in this particular case, buyer Ford was the award winner for state contracts for any Ford, anything 250 or higher, be it, you know, van, transit vans, or bucket trucks, or anything along those lines, so we went there first, and the price was above our budget for our lease purchases, so then we have purchased last year through Lilliston Ford through better pricing, so we reached out to them to do apples-to-apples comparison, and they came in more than 10% better than state contract, with purchasing laws, I'm able to just purchase directly with them for having an apples-to-apples comparison and beating the state contract pricing, so we went that route, I could have done a competitive contract or even just a regular bid, but it would have delayed everything by 30 days or more, so we just able to say, we're able to save the district more than 10%, not using state contracts and going with a different vendor.
Okay, so my question is then, it did not go out to competitive?
It did not go out for bid, no.
Thank you, that answers my question.
No problem, thank you.
Any other discussion on finance and operations? Seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Again, okay, Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd? I saw your lips, but it wasn't audible, if you want to just go ahead.
I'm sorry, yes.
There you go, thank you, Mr. Castellano.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're gonna go ahead and move to curriculum, if I could have a motion for 8.1, please.
Mr. Price, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Price and Mrs. Byrd, is there any discussion or updates on curriculum? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna look for a roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to personnel, so first I'm gonna ask for a motion on 9.1 through 9.5.
Motion, Mrs. Sullivan? I'll second it.
Mrs. Sullivan?
And just for clarification, Mrs. Alco, correct me if I'm wrong, we did have not, we did not have any items for transfers or for resignations, so it's now resolution for 9.1 through 9.3.
That is correct.
Okay, and I will take Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Byrd as a motion and a second.
Okay, is there any discussion on personnel? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving to policy, I'm gonna ask for a motion on 10.1 through 10.5, please.
So made.
Mrs. Salagi?
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Second, Mr. Delabarka, any discussion on policy? Okay, mostly second readings this evening, seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mrs. Gilbert, Moses Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone, so now we're at old business, the motion I'm looking for is a motion to revise our road back plan as outlined by our administration this evening.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Floyd, a second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and I'm gonna ask for discussion, I'm gonna ask Dr. Gruccio if she would quickly just summarize again, perhaps for our audience, and then any board members will have board discussion.
Sure, Mr. Castellano, basically due to unclear guidance, short amount of time, I propose for Agrover Township School District to begin the 2020-21 school year on September 8th, as all virtual for all learners, and all virtual instruction would proceed until October 23rd with progress checks along the way.
Very good, thank you, so I'll open it up for discussion, board members.
Yes, I have a question, comment, Dr. Gruccio, I want to thank you very much for the information that you presented us today, I know that it was an impossible situation that you are being put in right now, and it's a situation that unfortunately is not going to make everybody happy, I feel for our students who, you know, can't be face-to-face and meet their teachers and see their peers every day, you know, I'm disappointed that they can't go back to school, you know, with that said, we're here to support you and we need to follow your guidance, I do have just two quick questions, I know that as of right now, high school sports can still be played, you know, discussion was when we were doing the A A B B model, students were going to be bussed home and then bussed back for those sports, well, now that students are not in school, will the parents be the ones who will have to take them to the sport, or will the busing, you know, will that, will students be able to be bussed back?
That's a good question, and something that has not been discussed at my level, I don't know if Dr. Herry has, has been in discussions with anyone, but it certainly will be on our list of items to address in our administrator's meeting, Doc.
We had discussed about transportation issues, if we were gonna start off with an A and a B B schedule, and of course, circumstances beyond our control has kind of fogged that plan, and we've had to make different decisions and going in different directions, but we will be in touch with transportation tomorrow morning, prior to our administrator's meeting, inform them of the new strategy and incorporate their concerns and questions in terms of how we can come up with strategy to provide transportation.
Thank you, another question, when we do go back to school, what types of PPE has been ordered for staff?
Well, I can tell you off the top of the head, off the top of my head, cloth masks for staff and students and backup sets, we have shields, gloves, face shields, gowns, sanitizer, missing anything, gang, my staff?
The clear masks were also, yeah.
Oh, the clear mask where the, the students can see.
Great.
Thermometers everywhere, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, and then one other comment, I'm wondering, I know that, you know, a lot of people are calling in and they're concerned about social, emotional, you know, especially in middle school and high school levels, you know, it's really hard not to be around your peers, and, you know, some parents are noticing some depression within their students, and it's great that sports are still being able to be played at this time, but not every student is an athlete, I'm just wondering if maybe there's some sort of online club or activity students, you know, could potentially join just so they stay more involved with their peers?
Good question, good point, right now we are doing an assessment of our clubs and activities, Dr. Herry? Good question. Good point. Right now we are doing, uh, an assessment of our clubs and activities. Um, Dr. Herry is overseeing that as well. He's been in touch with, uh, Mr. Pellegrino. And, um, we have taken that into consideration and we are, we are working on that right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's it for me.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Summer. I saw Mrs. Salagi next.
Yes, I think, uh, we really can't imagine the agony that Dr. Gruccio has gone through to make this decision. Um, my question is, if we, if we support this tonight, do we have to wait until October 23rd? If things change, can we come back before that and have the students and staff in?
The way the resolution is written, Barbara, it's to submit it to the county and also to allow it to be amended based on guidance and information. So at that point, if Dr. Gruccio has a plan in place, if information is earlier, if she has a transition plan or any other information, um, she would be able to go ahead and make that recommendation and let the board know that that's what she would be doing.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Board members. Other board members, questions or comments?
Uh, this is Mr. Price. I just have a comment before we vote. Um, I would just like to say that I am still for the hybrid. I think most of us are, but, um, if the superintendent feels that we really aren't, are not ready, um, then I'm going to vote yes for the full virtual. So I just wanted to add that comment in there. And it was a great presentation, a lot of good questions, um, and tough decisions tonight. So, um, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other, any other board members? I see Mrs. Bird, yes.
Thank you. Um, I want to echo what everyone else was saying that this has been, um, an unreal time period for you, Dr. Gruccio and, um, I can't say how much. I'm just very proud to contribute to this district, even during these super difficult times. And while this, um, is not ideal for anyone, for teachers, for children, for parents, for, for us, um, I think safety is what you're putting first and I really appreciate that as a parent and a community member. Um, my concern, uh, after hearing a lot of the comments tonight were about our special education students and how we are going to reach their needs, their individual needs and their learning differences in a more impactful way than maybe we were able to in the spring. And I want to add to that, um, I know that our teachers and our staff worked very hard in the spring and, you know, there was no playbook. So I'm not in any way trying to criticize what our special education, uh, community did. However, um, it does sound like from a parent perspective in the calls that, you know, that, that a lot of parents are concerned. So I hope that we have some professional development planned, uh, that is sooner rather than later to assist with differentiating over a virtual format.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Bird. Other, other board members, comments? Anything else, uh, board members? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, yes. Go ahead, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
I got my mic unmute. I got it unmuted now. I just, oh, well, first of all, I want to say, I thought we had a stranger jump on our board meeting over there for a minute, but I see it's Mr. Ellis. He's, he's fashioning our newest, uh, gear that, is that what you ordered for the staff, Dr. Gruccio, the bass? But anyway, we got to laugh so we don't cry, right? So, um, I just wanted to, I think everyone has already said, you know, how much agony or distress or just a lot of work went into, um, the planning. And I know this was a, like you said, a tough decision and there, and unfortunately there are going to, you know, this is not going to be able to meet everyone's needs, um, in the district, but I do agree, um, with what Ms. Bird said in reference to putting the, the, the safety of the staff, students, um, everyone from the, whether it's the teachers, whether it's the principals, the custodians, the secretaries, um, just put in that um, in the forefront. Um, and I guess my, you know, the one thing that one, uh, one parent called in and she said, um, if it saves one person, you know, if it saves one person, um, it was worth it all, you know, and, and there's no guarantee of anything with, like I said, with this situation that we've all been put in. But I just want to say that I definitely am super proud to be a part of Agarvah Township, uh, as a parent. And it's not an easy decision, you know, it's a tough decision as a parent because I have two young children that I have to be home as well. And, um, in the education field, it's a tough decision too. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. I want, just, just thank you to all of our board members. Um, Dr. Gruccio, Mrs. Santilli, uh, Dr. Dr. Herry, and it's been, it's been a great experience, a tough one. But I just want to say to the Agarvah Township residents who are watching, I know, you know, it's a torn situation. Some people feel one way or the other, but, um, we are EHT strong and we, we will get through it. It's going to be a tough one, but we'll get through it and it'll, it'll, we'll get through it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. I see Mr. Ellis next.
Okay, I just had to thank, um, uh, Dr. Gruccio, sometimes you have to be careful for what you ask for. And I really, I really feel for you and your staff. You're doing such a great job and I know it's very difficult. You know, we got to find out, like they said, something we can do with, uh, kids after their, uh, visual part, um, part on, uh, online, you know, maybe we have, uh, you know, instead of gym, have some kind of games where they could use their computers when they could connect with their friends online after all their schoolwork is done. But this is a trying time. That's why I had to do a little sense of humor. If we was going back to me, I purchased this for all the board members. You know?
Oh, thank you.
You know, we need a little humor in this because this is very depressing state and we are doing the best we can. It's not just here, it's everywhere. So just keep the faith, this too show pass and make sure you just hang in there and you're doing a great job.
I'll get mine in the mail, Mr. Ellis.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Other board member? Comments or questions? Other board members? Okay, um, uh, I'm not seeing any, uh, you know, I'm just going to close it out briefly, uh, by just repeating, you know, what I said at the outset. Um, this is a difficult time and we're doing the best we can under difficult circumstances. We all want to see school be back to the way it was. We all want to see our world be back to the way it was. But I think that under the circumstances, this is the best that we can do to not only keep the students' education moving forward, but also to, um, realize that a top priority, among top priorities is the health, safety and welfare of our students and our teachers and our staff and of their family and of their loved ones. And so this decision tonight takes all of those things into account and does the very best that we can at this point in time under difficult circumstances. So I will be supporting it. And with that, I will ask for a roll call.
Thank you. Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
A big yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Thank you, administration for all the hard work. Thank you, board members for your patience, your hard work and your indulgence. This is not easy at all. Not at all. We are going to move to new business. I'm going to ask for a motion on 12 point one through 12 point 10, please.
This is Mr. Price. I can make that motion.
Motion and second? Do we have a second?
I'll second. 12 point five has been removed.
Yeah, that was my comment.
We will have 12 point five, uh, back in, uh, for our September meeting. Is there any discussion or updates necessary on new business?
Was that Mrs. Bird as the second? I just wanted to confirm because it was at the same time. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any discussion on new business items? Seeing none, I'm going to call for, uh, roll call, please. Oh, Mrs. Salagi, question?
Um, I had heard something about new school on election day and that is not, uh, on this calendar. Is that something that we have to do? Is that something that we're going to do or is this the calendar?
Good question. Uh, we pondered that. We looked at today, looked at that today. Um, but there's no need to, um, move or adjust the calendar because of the governor's announcement. Uh, we, we, we announced that schools are closed that day, but we can have virtual instruction that day.
Okay.
So we're good.
Very good. And obviously we, we have time before November if we did have to make a calendar adjustment. Any other, uh, questions or comments on new business? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
I will be abstaining on 12 point 10 and rest, yes to the rest.
Thank you. Mrs. Summer?
I will also be abstaining on 12 point 10 and yes to the rest.
Thank you. Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird?
Uh, yes to everything, but I am also abstaining to 12 point 10.
Thank you. Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, at this point, um, just in terms of board calendar, um, I do not believe we have a need to meet on August 25th. I did ask for everyone to just pencil that off on the calendar. Um, should, should, uh, a situation arise? Well, of course, at any time during this pandemic, we may have to call a meeting, but at this time I don't see the need to call a meeting on August 25th. Um, so we will be back, uh, in September unless it's necessary for some reason. We will, of course, call an emergency meeting, uh, should a circumstance dictate it. Um, and I'm going to look to see if there are any final comments from board members and then administration, uh, before we adjourn. It's been a very long night.
There was a second public comment, Mr. Castellano?
Um, so what I did was I had asked for pu- public on any, any topic, just to, just to consolidate. Because it had, you know.
Gotcha. Sorry about that.
Quite lengthy. So, but okay, I see Mrs. Bird and then Mr. Delabarka.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment, a lot of parents called in because they have early educate, early childhood, um, aged children, a lot of going into kindergarten and they're fearful because the students don't have the skills yet to use the computer or to read. But as a kindergarten teacher myself, I will assure you that there is not a day that's going by that our kindergarten teachers are probably not planning and, um, and preparing so that your child, while this is not the kindergarten experience that we may have all experienced, I assure you that teachers are going to make it a great experience for your child and are working hard to make sure that they get all the skills they need. And I just wanted to say that because I am a kindergarten teacher and I am worried about the same things you're worried about, but I'm telling you, uh, every ounce of my being is being poured into how to make this awesome for our students, for my students. And I know that our kindergarten teachers in this district are doing the same thing. So please just trust in the process. Um, it will all be okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bird. Excellent comments. Delabarka is next.
Just a few comments, uh, piggybacking on what Mrs. Bird just said, as a longtime principal of kindergarten grade level. Uh, even at one time in the district, we had a entire building that was all kindergarten. Um, and as a grandfather who has a child, grandson going into kindergarten, uh, I know that the kindergarten teachers are really preparing on how to deal with, uh, dealing with all their new kids on the first day of school, especially in the beginning of the year and training them on how to deal with virtual education. And I love the, uh, experience that our districts want to pre-provide for the meet and greet idea. I think that's wonderful. And I think that that'll be very helpful to the kindergarten students and to the parents and to the teachers. So that's just another comment. Uh, Pete, I wasn't sure if you were still going to bring up a discussion about us having virtual meetings or not, or in-person meetings as a board of education. Uh, I thought you had said something earlier that possibly we're going to bring that up again, uh, regarding our next meeting. Uh, am I right, Pete, on that or not?
Um, what, what I had planned to do Lou was just as we've been doing as we get closer to our next meeting where we're all together, I'll poll the board.
Well, I was going to recommend that since we are all virtual through October 23rd, I don't think that's necessary. I think we stay as virtual board of education until we do go back to school. And if that happens in, like, the end of October or November, then possibly we go to in-person meetings. I don't think we need to have that discussion and, and, uh, uh, vote, uh, before each of our next meetings. I think that we know we're going to be a virtual district till October 23rd. So I think our meetings can be held virtually until that time. And then when we get near the end of October, we can have a discussion about the, uh, going back to in-person meetings at the end of October or November, whatever the district decides to do at that time. That's all. I have to thank everybody. Everybody had a chance to thank Dr. Gruccio and her team. Outstanding work. I know as a former elementary principal, I'm glad I'm not there doing this, uh, that you folks have done such hard work and such effort. And I think we made the best decision we possibly could under the circumstances. And our district will proceed and progress and continue to do all the good things that we do. We have outstanding people that work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Any, any other board members?
Yes, this is Mr. Price. I just have a comment in closing. Uh, do I have it?
Sure, sure, yes.
Well, again, yeah, I wanted to thank everybody as well and, um, the Road Back Committee, I mean, I know we mentioned them towards the beginning, but without them, we wouldn't have gotten a, a lot of these things accomplished. Um, so we appreciate all the hard work that the Road Back Committee, uh, put into this. And, uh, I know it's been a long night and again, um, I think we made the right decision and, um, looking forward to the next meeting. So whether it's virtual, in person, most likely it'll be virtual, but I guess we'll wait and see. So thanks again and everybody have a good night.
Any other board members?
Uh, I just wanted to know what we decided. I heard Mr. Delabarka's recommendation. Are we just waiting? Are we doing that tonight? I would, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, and, and I, I, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Delabarka's point and I think that most likely it makes sense for us to continue virtually. However, I, I want to make sure that it's a democratically arrived at decision. So I will poll the board before our next meeting, which is our next work meeting, September 15th. I'll poll the board through the email with, uh, Mrs. Anaya like we did before. When we get together on the 15th, I'll again poll. I just, you know, I, I feel it's important that this, the decision be made, you know, democratically by the majority.
Oh, I, I just wanted to make sure. Tonight.
I do agree. Well, I think because there's so much time between now and then, um, I think, uh, you know, I'll poll. I'll poll as we get closer, but I, I, you know, so I'm agreeing, I guess I'm agreeing with both sides. I, I think it makes sense for us to say, stay virtual personally, but I think it'd be, in light of what we're, you know, doing district-wide, but at the same time, that needs to be a decision made by the majority of the board. I don't, I don't think I'm, you know, the one to make that call. That'll be made by, you know, the board, and the majority will rule.
And I just want to say, I'm, I'm clear, I was clear on that, Mr. Price. I understand you want to be the majority rule. I have no prob, I don't think that it should be a decision made by one person. I was just making sure, clarifying that we're gonna do it closer to the meeting via email or whether we were doing it tonight. That was the only, just really clarification that I just wanted to make sure. And just, and, and I just want to say that all the comments that came in, those that were in support of the plan and those that even weren't, that I just, I just hope that the public knows that we heard everyone and that we understand that, you know, the, the problems that it could pose to, to families and, and to people that have to go to work. And like you said, it was a tough decision, but just wanted to put that there. We heard everyone's comments.
Very good. Thank you. Any other board members? Before I go to anyone from administration to close out, I just want to, again, extend my thanks to Dr. Gruccio and administration for working so hard, our Road Back Committee. Board members, thank you so much. Our teachers, our staff, all of you do such a fantastic job. We appreciate all the public comment that we received tonight. We really did our best with all of it. If we didn't get to every question or every part of your question, I would urge you to please go back and look at the replay of the broadcast, watch Dr. Gruccio's presentation. And if you still have questions, reach out to us. You know, there's many ways to reach out to us through our website, contacting your, your child's teacher. Make use of that. Give us a shout, and, and we'll, we'll try our best to answer any questions or concerns. So I'll just turn it over to, to Doc for anything before we, before we adjourn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Castellano. I too want to say thank you, everyone. Thank you to the Board of Education for your support. Thank you for, you know, taking the time to ask the questions. They're very important. Again, I always say, feedback makes us stronger at what we do. And remember, we are EHT. That's every hand together. And together, we're gonna prevail, and we're gonna get through this. And it's about teamwork and it's about supporting each other. I'd like to thank my administration, you know, K through 12, particularly my central office staff, Mr. Santilli, Dr. Herry, Chandra, Naya, Dr. Charlton, and Ms. Elko, who every day, eight days a week, we spend a lot of time throwing ideas past each other and, you know, keeping each other in, in the race. And I couldn't ask for more knowledge, passion, and persistence in, in a group of people for holding me together through all this. So thanks again. Again, appreciate your support, and we're gonna get through this. I, I have to say, it wasn't easy. I feel like a huge lift has been off my shoulders, but I also know tomorrow I, I'm gonna wake up and I'm gonna face my administrative team, and we're gonna move forward with the, the plan that we now have in place and getting all the parts and pieces going. So as we engage in this, it's important to me that, that I meet the student needs and provide them with a relevant education. And, and I know it's hard, but please keep in mind that education is paramount, but so is the lives of our students and our staff and our families. Okay, so again, I appreciate you persevering, persevering through this and with me, but most of all, I appreciate your trust and your, and your believing in me and my staff. So thank you and good night.
With that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Ms. Floyd?
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Gilbert Floyd, Mr. Price, by acclamation. Good night, everyone, and thank you.
Good night. Good night.
We are adjourned.